Malachi. Malachi, are you here? Not yet. Tiffany is here. The one is here and Shersha is here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we begin the informal meeting of October 12th, 2021. If you hear some whining in the background, that is my dog. And I apologize, but I haven't had a chance to take him out right now. I'll try to keep it on mute. Let's see. Copies of draft minutes, September 13th and September 21st meetings have been provided to council members and also have been posted on the city website. Copies of all committee reports are on your desks or in this case in your box at City Hall. We have two communications, one for the Conservation Advisory Council about the proposed solar farm. And then Mayor Johnson's veto message pertaining to local law introductory H of 2021. That being said, let's start with department reports and I see and I thought I saw, oh, there he is. Nick Piro, are you going to be doing the fire report?
Yeah, I will be.
Okay, go ahead, Nick.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I don't have a total number of calls for last month. We have been kind of busy. The high rise had some issues with their alarm system. I think we went there 14 times in a 10 day span. They do have that rectified now. They got a different company in that has taken care of it. I spoke with maintenance today and everything is is up and running properly. We haven't actually been there in the last week, so that's a plus. Our new truck is here and is in service. Guys have been out quite a bit training on it. It'll probably be out here in the next hour, doing some more training. So everything's going very good with that. The old one is advertised for sale. No bites on that yet. We have had a couple of water rescue calls. We had one the other day with four people on a boat. And that was sinking just south of the boat launch. And we were able to get those people off without injury before the boat sank to the bottom of the river about a half hour, 40 minutes after we got them off. So that was a plus. That's the second time this summer we've had to go out and rescue people off a boat. So that's good. We were Athens Fire assisted us as well as Greenport Rescue. With that, we work very well with both those departments with our dive team. So that's a big plus. Other than that, I don't believe we really have anything. If anybody's got any questions, but that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Nick. Any questions from the council?
The council is going to give a tour of the new of the new bus and ladder.
Yeah, the guys are there every Tuesday. I know all the, a lot of the council members had come up the night it was delivered to to see it be delivered. But the guys are up there any Tuesday night if anybody ever wants to stop by. There is right now a wet down ceremony being put together. I don't remember the exact date. I believe it's in a couple of weeks invitations for that will go out to the entire council and other city administration as well as soon as that date is steadfast.
That would be this year?
I think it's going to be within the next, I believe it's the end of this month. I have to double check.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nick, Nick, I just want to, I followed that water rescue and I want to commend you guys for awesome work in in that it's very traumatic event and you guys handled that very well. And I do what I commend you guys in that work.
Thank you.
Okay, barring further questions. Report from Liz York. Our Director of Youth.
Hello. I don't really have a lot. Just an update on programming. It's been going fairly well. We've been having some good attendance. We're still at Oakdale for the younger kids. We've got some programming going there. We're doing art classes with Nico twice a week. We actually have a fair amount of programming happening for our teens right now. At the youth center, we've got Mondays, we've got video club and sewing. And Wednesdays, we've got cooking and web design and Fridays we have Sound Lab. And so that's going really well. We've got the Shaker Museum is gonna come in soon and do a fabric arts class with some of the older kids, maybe do some table looms and weaving classes. Daniel Stiff is looking to come in and do a circus program with us. And then we'll be at Oakdale until the end of the month. And then in November, we're going to move to completely indoor programming. It would be ideal if we could stay separate and have those spaces, but with the weather, we just don't really have that option. So we'll be moving shortly. We're also doing soccer right now. That's going really well. We're averaging about 60 kids a day. It's every Saturday. I would say every week we get a couple more kids because we have a rolling open registration. So kids can sign up whenever they want. And it's been really cool to see the kids showing up every weekend, continuing to build on the skills they learned the week before, which is nice. Hopefully it'll build to a full on program next year with games and teams and all of that. And then the only other thing I really have is we're doing an Oakdale cleanup on October 16th. I think that's Saturday from one to four with friends of Oakdale Lake. We're going to do a deep clean. We're going to clean up the back ponds, go in there and get that old tire that's been floating around in there for a while. And also when we had the arborist come through, he suggested to us some work we could do to get the invasive species under control and start managing some bigger picture things. So we're going to do some invasive species removal as well. That's all. I don't really have much else right now.
Okay, Maya, anything you'd like to add? Ask Commissioner.
At this point, Liz has covered it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, any questions for Liz?
What's your attendance? How many kids are you working with now? And are you building relationships with their parents?
We're getting about 20, 25 kids for both age groups. I'm building more relationships with the kids and the parents at this point because we do have full busing to and from our younger program and most of the older kids walk. But you know, as parents do come in and introducing myself and getting to know them a little bit more. So I'm getting to know the kids right now.
Any other questions? Okay, I guess we can move along. And next is Robin Waters with a report on seniors.
Thank you. So as everybody knows, we're in the BA process. And we're request for funding for a new director to support the development of the department. We do receive quite a few requests from community members for new programming through our website. And we would really like to be able to start those programs and be able to kind of bolster what we're already doing. In terms of an update around the clerk position, we have interviews scheduled and we are hoping to hire someone as soon as we can. We are working on a collaborative project with also the aging and the library to raise awareness on Alzheimer's and create more resources at the library that people can check out. I think I mentioned that before about a grant that we received from the Berkshire Taconic Foundation to support that work. There's also a walk. It's in Poughkeepsie, but for anyone who may be interested on October 16th, there's an Alzheimer's Awareness Walk. Just wanted to put that out there and put it on people's radar. And anyone likes to attend the BA meeting will be Friday at three, but actually, Tom, can you do two o'clock? Oh, you're muted. I can't hear you.
I have to talk to the other two members.
Okay, it was one of them who requested for the two, so.
Okay, that should work.
All right. So you can check the calendar, I guess, if anyone would like to attend that. And I wanted to introduce someone who is on the call. It's Gloria Murray. She is our regional ombudsman for our, as a nursing home advocate, and she was instrumental in advocating throughout the whole pandemic. She was going to give an update on how, what's going on with the nursing homes and what their initiatives are for the ombudsman program. Gloria, do you want to?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Thanks, Robin. Thanks for inviting me. I want to also introduce my staff ombudsman, May Rossi. She is my Columbia County specific staff ombudsman. She visits the Columbia County Nursing Homes and visits with the residents. So I don't know if everyone is aware of the ombudsman program. So I'm just going to give a quick overview. We are a resident centered, resident directed advocacy. We are responsible to listen to residents and their complaints, investigate and help them resolve any issues that they are having in the facility. We currently cover our region covers Columbia, Green, Sullivan, Elster, Duchess and Orange. And as I said, May is solely covering Columbia and Green. So she is making sure that those residents are getting routine visits. We are powered. We are powered by volunteers. So of course during COVID, we did lose some volunteers and we are in the process right now of rebuilding. But during COVID, we were not allowed in the facility. We just started back in the facility on April 30th. And we're mandated back into facilities on July 1st. So we are back in during COVID. We were handling a lot of family complaints and and calls regarding not being able to get in things that they were seeing with their with their family members. So we were very active and now we are in, we're talking to residents. We are working with them to try to address it. But as you know, there's some, there are some challenges at hand. Obviously staffing is one of them, has never been good. And now with the vaccine, we are looking at some increased staffing shortages. So we are there, we are working with residents. We try to get as much resolved as they possibly, as we possibly can with the residents and their issues. Residents, I just want to talk a little bit, families. Families are concerned, you know, there are many things that have been passed and the Essential Caregivers Act is one of them that was passed. So residents will never have to be without a visit from a family member in another public health emergency ever again. So we are very thankful of that, that residents are able to have caregivers be their family. Should we ever get into a situation like we were in in 2020? And we are busy. We are, you know, obviously we're training new volunteers this week to get out there and start working with residents in the nursing home. And May, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you did a really good job. Very, very, very interesting job. Meeting with lots of residents. Staffing is the number one concern across the board, no matter which building we go into, we hear about staffing problems from residents and also sometimes from the staff that's actually in the building.
And to add on to that, one of the, you know, some of the legal response to the situation in 2020 was to increase patient time that they had with staff face to face direct care. And so now the staffing shortage is not able to implement what we had advocated for. So.
Correct. So on the state staffing, I just want to say up up until June, New York State had no state staffing regulation. In June, it was passed. However, it does not go into effect until January 1st, 2022. So the staffing hours are still below the federal staffing hours that are required. So we are, we were glad that they placed the state, the safe staffing regulation, but it's not up to where a federal regulation would be at 4.1, I believe. New York State is at 3.71 hours per resident care per day. So not not a lot when you are looking at residents who require a lot of care during the day. So that is, Robin, is there anything else you want me to touch base on while I'm here?
Well, I just wanted to see, so people should reach out to you directly or to May. And thank you so much for.
Yes. So anyone can reach out to to our office. We are, everything comes to the main office, which is 845-229-4680. And my email is Gloria@ltccc.org. I'll put it in the chat. May is part time, so everything comes pretty much to the main office and then her and I confer and talk about her visits and where she is going. She does have a schedule. She's out there every, the two days that she works, she's out there every week making visits. I will say that we just started this new process of having a ombudsman to cover each county. And we have noticed a big intake increase of complaints now that we are really in in the facilities on a more routine basis. And we are handling as much as we can when it comes to resident care because we are there for resident rights, quality of care and quality of life.
Can you say a little more about family councils and how those are beneficial?
Sure. So family councils are not in every facility. Facilities are required to have resident councils, which is where residents gather and they talk about their concerns and their issues at the facility. Family councils are something where families get together and they join this, they make this council for the facility and they address issues that are systemically happening in the facility, whether it's cold food, poor nutrition, lack of care, and they deal with it and they meet routinely and they talk about it. And there's a whole process that they they can actually make make the facility better. Statistics have shown that family councils, when they are at a facility, they do improve the care because they're addressing issues on a systemic basis versus on a one by one basis. So we are, we can encourage resident families to start a family council. It is a little bit of time to devote to developing a resident, a family council for the families. So sometimes they are spread in so many different directions. It doesn't always happen, but we are there to help them promote it and build it and get started. And we do encourage family councils because they can very much make a difference.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
And we're so lucky that you've relocated our resident of Hudson.
Yes, I am a resident of Hudson since January. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Sure.
And also it's so, as you heard, Gloria is looking for volunteers, also Meals on Wheels, also the agent is also looking for volunteers. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And there is training. Volunteers have to go through a very detailed training of 36 hours in classrooms. So they don't just get, sign up and go out there and start advocating. They actually have to be vetted very thoroughly to make sure there's no conflict of interest. And we have to, they have to sit for a training. Actually, we just started one today and they get mentored afterwards for six hours and then they get certified. So it is a, it is a big commitment for a volunteer and I am very thankful for the 15 volunteers that I have covering the six counties because it is a lot of time and and commitment on their part. So, thank you.
Thank you. Robin, anything else?
Um, those are the updates for now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council members?
Yes, I would like to know from Robin and just to let Liz know because chat is open and I sent her a direct message.
Please close the chat.
So I'm just letting her know that I will be reaching out because I do want to speak to her about the children and building a relationship with their parents because that is very important. Robin, I wanted to know how close are you all with having someone work with you all that speaks Spanish? I've been talking to a wonderful woman from Providence Hall. And she wants to attend many things, especially these particular meetings, but she is not fluent in English at all. And she feels restricted to her home because where can she go that they're interpreting or has, you know, any events for Hispanic you're planning or something?
Right now, we're not because we're focusing on hiring someone who can take on the planning and organizing of those events. But I'm more than happy to work with you on how we can address that. And I don't know if that's a question for the, for Tom in terms of how she could, the meetings could be accessible.
Yeah, that's, we've been working on that with the city. I've been working on that with the police chief, you know, as far as interpreters. But we need someone on staff for the seniors. Because this is very important and it's excluding people that should be a part of this.
Right.
That's my constituents. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I think it's a big concern and I think it's definitely be addressed, but we need to at least hire a clerk at this point and also a director to further to address it.
Any other questions?
Just one because Robin, I think you're about as new to the BEA process as I am overall.
It go last year. I don't know.
True, true, true.
But yes.
I just wanted to make sure because I'm very much behind what you're getting off the ground. Do you feel like you have ample resources right now? And what else can we do to help you get these new people on board so that we can expedite some of the things like Tiffany's brought up and whatnot?
Right. Thank you for that. And also thank you for donations to the senior center. Very helpful. We decided that the donations for this month would go towards senior trips. So any donations that come in this month will be allocated for that. And we could use a lot of, we could do support at this time in hiring staff and and going through the BEA process. So if you're willing to help with that, I would really appreciate it if that's something that you or anyone in the council wants to support.
Tom, are there any conflicting rules on that to down assist?
I don't really understand what you mean. Rules about what exactly?
Help helping her get presentation budget and whatnot in line for for BEA.
I think, well, no, you can, Robin can consult anyone she wishes.
All right, great. Robin, I'll, I'll reach out and put some time on your calendar to help.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Robin. Yes, moving along. Let me see, I don't see Heather here. Heather, oh, there she is. Heather, your report, please. Treasure report? Heather? Oh, there you go.
Yeah, no, I'm good. Navigating through a bunch of different sheets. Hold on one second. So I'm going to share my screen. It's hopefully going to be a relatively short presentation today because as you all know, we are in the middle of the budget process. So that's taking up a fairly good amount of time, but I will share with you this. Okay, so a lot of this is just sort of more informational. I just want to make sure that people are aware. So in terms of the ARPA funds, the last time that I reported to the council, the original project expenditure report due date was October 31st, 2021. It has now been moved to April 30th, 2022. And that's going to cover the period between when the money was awarded and March 31st, 2022. So that's going to include any decisions we make in this year to use as funds, one which we have done already. And anything that we choose to use in the 2022 budget to help offset expenditures. In terms of operational things, I touched base with the labor attorney today. She's going to provide a quote for the best practices and considerations for the development of a formal city accrual policy. I've also touched base with Tracy Delaney in terms of targeting a transfer of accrual tracking into the paycheck system, which as we've said before on multiple occasions, is going to offer a lot of benefit because each individual employee will be able to see on their pay stubs how much accrual time they have. The managers will know in real time how much accrual they have. And so we're looking forward to getting that kicked off. As I said, obviously, all the department heads are aware that we've started the BA meetings right now. And this is without the BEA seeing an initial revenue projection and not including any use of ARPA funds, not including use of fund balance and not assuming a tax levy increase. The ask versus the expenditures is about a $1.5 million gap. So clearly there is a lot of work to be done to get that into a balanced budget.
Why, why do you have revenues listed there? We haven't done revenues.
That's why it says before BEA revenue review in the parentheses.
Then how can you have a gap between the revenues and expenditures? If we haven't done revenues.
Well, because I've made an estimate of revenues for us to review. I mean.
Okay.
Which is what we've traditionally done in the last several years. So.
Okay.
In terms of the 2020 audit, that is still in progress. Continuing to work with CDC to reconcile the the tourism board reserve and also now working with the planning board on reconciling the escrow accounts. I think we're in very good shape on both of those. So I just need to do a final touch base on both of those with both of those teams to make sure that we're all in agreement and then we should be in good shape there. Probably nobody cares about this except me, but our current KBS software is at last finally being phased out. It is circa 2012 for the general lever, general ledger and approximately 2008 for the tax collection software. So we're going to see a demo this Friday, this Friday of the current vendors new tax collection software. The thing that has been a problem because we've been exploring new software for literally probably six years at this point is that the city offers two things that we have been having great difficulty finding someone who can replicate. One is the fact that we, per the charter, bill our taxes on a quarterly basis. And many of the softwares don't do that. They do it either annually or semi annually. And in my opinion, far more importantly is the fact that the city offers installment agreements for people who are delinquent on their taxes, which is a fairly complex behind the scenes calculation. And so that has been the single biggest thing that has helped us up from being able to transfer to another software program. So I'm very much hoping that on Friday we'll be able to share that need with them and they will be able to hopefully deliver for us. So just going to the revenues that we generally track, as you can see, we're in pretty good shape on all the parking revenues. We continue to be slightly low on Front Street Municipal Lot. We're 55% of where we were versus the budget with 75% of the year passed, but that's a trend that we've continued to see and I imagine will probably continue going forward. But on an off street parking, parking and other permits and parking tickets in particular are doing extremely well. So right now, we're pretty much in line, 78% of total revenues with 75% of the year completed to date. And if you just look at the year to date comparison, so this is through September, you can see on an off street parking, significant increase, parking tickets, a significant increase, parking and other permits, a significant increase. And then obviously Front Street Municipal Lot, slightly less. And then I did pull the numbers from 2019 year to date, just because obviously 2020 was a little odd because of COVID. And you can see that in in both cases, we're still looking pretty aggressively strong compared to the 2019 numbers. So I think that bodes well for us in terms of revenue going forward. Same story with building permits and fees. We're at 131% of budget on plumbing permits. That means not a big number, but still it's a good trend. And building permits, we basically made our budget number already with three more months to go. I, you know, I anticipate that that trend will continue, given some of the projects that have come up before the planning board and or the IDA. Just not sure about the timing of some of those, but again, these are, these are positive signs. So and if you compare against where we were through September 20, you can see that the numbers are looking pretty strong. The only thing that's new on the sales mortgage and lodging tax revenues is the lodging tax that's been updated. That number is is very close, but still an S. Um, that number is, is very close, but still an estimate. Because we still have to go back and reconcile some of the various numbers, but it's going to be very close to that. So you can see we're looking quite strong on the lodging tax number, uh, versus prior year. Mortgage tax, as a reminder, we only get paid twice a year and we generally don't get the second payment until December. So the first payment clearly blew out the budget. So that's another strong indicator. Um, and in terms of sales tax contribution, I actually, again, this is just the first quarter. And, uh, I did reach out to PJ Keeler today to find out when we would be getting the second quarterly payment. Because it's usually paid out in August and all those payments have been a little delayed, I think because of COVID and other issues. Um, so we are apparently going to find out on Thursday what the second quarter sales tax contribution is. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions from members of the council?
Oh yeah, this is Rebecca. Um, Heather, did you have any report on compliance?
Oh, um, we're continuing to pursue that. Um, as I said last month, about half of the people we contacted registered. I did reach out to Jeff Baker to, um, inquire what the next steps would be. In terms of people that we know that have responded, that we know are not, um. Necessarily being entirely honest with their responses. And so Jeff Baker and I had a conversation about that and we're going to be, uh, producing letters. It's, it's a little tricky only because, um, the law says that. My office is supposed to provide an estimate of how much they've taken in and we don't really have any way of doing that. But what we can.
Something that, um, I'm pretty sure that that is something that, uh, lodging revs can help with.
Yes, but if you remember when we talked about this before, the way that they estimate that is by picking a percentage. Of what they think the rental was and just applying that. And then they literally will ask us, well, what percentage do you want to use? So do we think that they were, you know, do you think that they had fifty percent occupancy? Do you think they had twenty-five percent occupancy? That's how they do it. They come up with a estimate. And then they ask us what estimate we want to use. So there's nothing more concrete than that. Um, but what we do have for sure is the fact that, um. That we can say we have evidence that shows that you were advertising on this platform for this period of time. And right now, my, my sort of go-to assumption in terms of what we're going to do is basically say, we're going to assume. You know, a pretty significantly high. Uh, occupancy rate, which means your tax could be as high as this. And it's basically your obligation to prove us otherwise. I think that's the best approach that we have at this point. So that's going to be our approach for the people that are still outstanding.
Great.
Other questions from the council? Anything from the, uh, public? Uh, Heather, could you take your, your screen down, please?
Sure can.
I can see hands going up or not. Okay. And again, I just want to say, I think that was, that one line was just. Really just as. Not well thought out in terms of data. Um, about. The revenue and expenditures. Moving right along.
Actually, Tom, would it be okay? Um, I wanted to inclare, include Claire Cousin in, uh, my presentation about. Housing resources that seniors might need. Um, I didn't see that she was here, but she was here. Is it okay if she goes now?
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Claire?
I'm here. Um, I wasn't aware I was presenting tonight, but.
Oh, I thought you were, okay.
Uh, yeah, we plan on partnering together just to get, um, seniors informed about their rights around, um. What's available for housing help at the moment. Um, our organization has the tenants' rights hotline. And we've been helping folks, um, apply for ERAP. Um, and yeah, linking them to legal services if need be. And we're, we're kind of trying to just get a gauge for what the needs of the senior citizen population is around affordable housing.
Thanks, Claire.
Thank you, Claire. Um, let's see. So up next is the chief.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me, council president?
Oh, yes, loud and clear.
So, uh, we have, uh, we'll dispense with the mandatory reporting for the department. Uh, I've already sent to the mayor's office our monthly body camera review. Uh, that's, it came from the park program where, uh, we review about a hundred segments of body cameras. Just randomly through the course of a month, reviewed by supervisor. And the results of that review are sent to the mayor's office. So that was, that's been done. The section nine park reporting, um, I've emailed it to all the council. So it'll be in your email, uh, but I will share it on the screen right now. Okay. All right.
We're done. The bottom says share screen in green.
Yeah. I got it, but it's not up for some reason. Anyway, I'll read it to you. The, uh, section nine reporting. Okay, what we do in this report is we go over the use of force incidents and, uh, also the number of arrests. And the overdose counts in Narcan usage. So, uh, for the month of September, uh, we had no use of force incidents. Uh, hence there was no, uh, duty to intervene instance by fellow officers. There was a total of thirty arrests for the month and I've delineated them in the email I sent to you. And, uh, I believe just, uh, two instances of felonies for the month of September, which is very good. And, uh, we have recalled eighteen, uh, to eighteen instances of emotionally disturbed people. Eighteen is a lot for one month and I'll get into that a little bit later. Uh, we had three instances last month of overdoses. And, uh, in, we administered Narcan three times. And in one instance, uh. We had a, an overdose death. So, uh, that report has been, um, emailed to everyone on the council for review and I. Uh, if there's any questions after the meeting or the next couple of days when you review, I'll be glad to answer them. Next comes the, uh. Quarterly traffic reports. And this, uh, also comes out of, uh, council. And that there's a breakdown by traffic arrests by race. So for the third quarter, uh, we wrote a hundred and fifteen tickets. Um, and broken down by race and general categories. Sixty-four point three of our traffic tickets were, uh, issued to, uh, Caucasian operators. Twenty-eight point six to African-American, three point four to Asian operators and three point four percent other. And, um. As a. There's not a lot of difference statistically. If you look at last year's, I mean, last quarter's traffic tickets. So after looking at the numbers, I don't see any, uh, any trend or pause for concern there. Um, again, that can be reviewed by everyone on the council, uh, at their convenience. The, as far as, uh, our department's activity over the, over the, uh, last month. It's clear, uh, that your department's being called for, uh, unusually high amount of responses to emotionally disturbed people. Who in turn are utilizing assets, limited assets of the city in terms of social workers and. And Greenport Rescue and Fire, even sometimes Fire Services. So in response to, and I think we can talk in general terms, uh, the citizens of Hudson see. Uh, these people often when walking the streets or in the Seventh Street Park or on a park bench. It results in a lot of, um, calls for service for the department. Um, many of the people that you see, um, in this condition throughout our city are, uh, have been arrested multiple times. They're bottled up in the court system. So there has to be some kind of other, uh, resolution to this matter to improve the quality of life, not only for our citizens. But for the people affected themselves that need treatment. So in September alone, um, I've been asked, I asked to be part of a, uh, multiple disciplinary team. At the hospital to discuss what can be done in terms of treatment for people. On the twenty-seventh, I met with, uh, PJ Keeler on a county level. The county EMS coordinators along with Kate Oldowski from MCAT and her regional director, Scott Thomas. And then that, uh, meeting, uh, progressed to another meeting the following day at Columbia Memorial. Uh, with, uh, Brian Mahoney, the CMH, CMH CFO and, um. The director of, uh, psychological or department, psychiatry department, uh, Brian Stewart. And also PJ Keeler. And the thought process coming out of this, this month's work on this is why isn't there any progress? Why aren't we improving the condition? We have the same situation more or less as last year in dealing with emotionally disturbed people. And the, what came out of the meetings was perhaps the development of what they call a field team. Which is a team of, uh, social workers, MCAT, uh, people to go out and proactively confront. Uh, these people, address these people and try to get them into treatment or assess their daily needs. Before the police have to be, get involved, before, uh, there's an incident in the park, before there's an incident on our street. So the idea is to establish a new team and fund a new team that's proactive in addressing, uh, these, these situations. You know, I think City Hudson's small enough, uh, si- larger cities have big programs like this. Because they're literally addressing hundreds of psychiatric issues with emotionally disturbed people. The, that's the, uh, good, bad news is that we don't get a lot of that funding. But the good news is because we've done case studies on about six to eight of these folks. That we think it's a, a, a number that we can manage with this team and with the right application of resources. That we might be able to make an actual improvement that people can see. So, uh, we'll carry on in the month of October with the idea about forming a field team to go out. And address these people's needs, especially with the cold weather coming in. So, uh, that's in the works. Also to report, coming out of police reform and, um, park committee, the mayor's park committee. Uh, there was a, um, a mandate for, uh, community conversations between our police officers. And citizens of Hudson. So, um, it's being facilitated by Dr. Kelsey Jones. Uh, city attorney's office and the mayor's office. So, uh, we're, we'll be publishing soon, uh, meetings, meeting dates. In which every member of our department will participate to meet with the public, field questions, meet face to face. And this isn't just, uh, one or two meetings. It's a, it's a whole series of meetings going all the way down into December. So to help approve, uh, police community, you know, relations. So we're happy and privileged to have Dr. Jones on board with that and her, to bring her expertise to keep the. The, uh, conversations useful and productive. And, uh, the mayor's office could probably, the last thing I have is a rather large grant was secured. By the mayor's office for training our officers, uh, uh, and to program children of incarcerated parents. And, um, the mayor's office, I won't get into it too, uh, detailed. But perhaps the mayor kind of will address it on his own at his own time. But we've secured, secured a lot of money through the cops grant to train our, our officers. Into, uh, heightened awareness, uh, during arrest situations and the effect on young, young people. So a lot of things happening in, uh, in September. Uh, we have two members out right now with, uh, confirmed case of COVID. But we're maintaining our minimum staffing. So I don't see imminent threat of public safety in terms of, or excessive use of overtime at this time. So we're hope, we're hanging in there. The COVID thing has not gone away and, uh. And, uh, we're, that's it. That's it for my report tonight, Tom.
Okay, thank you, chief. Um, is the commissioner there with you?
He is not.
Oh, I just want to see if he had anything to add. In that case, council members. Any question?
I don't know if this pertains to you or maybe DPW. We have Kelly, uh, here from Camp Hill. Kelly, uh, you're on. You can ask your question.
Okay, um, my, what my concern is, um. Is there is this, um, traffic light on third and Warren? Of, this is, um, this is traffic light on third and Warren that I, that I'm concerned about. Um, that I, I've written a letter to the city council. And, um, my main concern is, uh, so it's a dangerous, um, spot there for us. With special needs people and we would like to request to have a, a stoplight there. So it can be served for us to, uh, walk to, um, our place of work. That's what, uh, that's what my concern is about. Having a stoplight being put up there.
Where, a stop light or a stop sign?
Stop, uh, stop, uh, those, like those pedestrian stoplights. You know, I got a lot of Tiffany. We've spoken about this before. It's a pedestrian stoplight, the one that you push.
Oh, yeah, okay. Not, not a traffic light, but the pedestrian, uh, walkway light, I think is what we're talking about here.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's concern, yes.
That is, that, that, that is Chief Moore that asked you that, Kelly.
I, yes, Chief Morgan, that's, that is the, that is my concern, yes.
Okay.
And, um. I went to the last meeting and it got approved. I think it couldn't go through, um. Uh, it's just, um, improved. So I'm still waiting on the progress with that, um. With that stoplight to be installed there. It hasn't gotten there yet. I'm so concerned about it.
I believe, uh, Alderman Moranti has got a work in progress in terms of pedestrian fu- funding of pedestrian crosswalks. Cause that's really all it takes is the funding. And I don't know, it may, perhaps he can update us or he can talk to me later and update us on the status of that. For certain traffic signals.
Sure, I can, I can speak real quick, chief. So Kelly, one of the issues is, you know, it was identified a location. You know, right by, uh, um, the crosswalk, uh, by the, uh, Opera House, uh, Hudson Hall. Unfortunately, uh, cause these crosswalks that we have, they can't be put in because they don't interact with a stoplight. However, they can be put in mid, mid-block. However, there's some complications in installing it in that location. Because of lines underneath the ground and also because of the, uh.
I'm not concerned about the one by Hudson Hall. I'm concerned about the traffic route right there. I'm not concerned about the one by Hudson Hall. I'm concerned about the traffic route right there on third and Warren.
Third and one, that whole intersection that goes back and forth from Catskill. Right on the corner and that ain't that busy in the, in the section.
Right, yeah. Unfortunately, these, these devices, they, they don't install, you know, with what you're talking about. Uh, because our stoplights and, and probably Rob can also speak, our stoplights are really antiquated. And it would cost probably a hundred thousand dollars to integrate, um, you know, you know, stop, uh, the crosswalk, um, at those lights. Um, right now. So it really becomes a serious funding i- issue. I agree that it's needed, but unfortunately, the reason I.
I think.
Can the city council can raise the money for us and we get it started?
I think we should and I think that's the right thing to do, especially since this city has to be ADA compliant. And we need to make sure, um, everyone is, is being accounted for and accommodated. Council? Anybody else has anything to say to Kelly? Council members?
Thank you, Kelly, for, um, I know it's been difficult for you to speak in public and I'm. Want to congratulate you on coming for the second time to talk about this. And it certainly.
I really wanted it to happen. Please, it shouldn't, super major concern of my, I need to see this happen. I'm, I'm getting really concerned about this. It hasn't happened. I've. I'm getting really concerned about this. It hasn't happened. I have a lot of this get underway. I'm really frustrated about this. It has not happened. It's a real concern issue of mine. I need to have this happen.
Mm hmm.
I'm getting really stressed. I'm stressed about this and I'm frustrated. It has not happened. I need to see it happen. I'm getting really stressed about this. I need to have this happen.
And we're gonna we're gonna work on it. I don't want you to get yourself worked up and stressed out right now. We are, we're gonna work on this. We're gonna see what we can do and what we can't do. I know that also at the same time, Kelly, Council Member Maranti and the rest of the members who support it has been working on slowing down the speed limit as well. I know that is not exactly what you're requesting, but it helps with the flow of traffic.
So what you're telling me Tiffany is a stoplight is not going to go in there?
No, that's not. That's not what I'm saying. I said, we're gonna look into it and see what the city can do and can't do.
Well, I hope the city can do it for my benefit and for my friend's benefit. What I'm concerned about, Chris.
Absolutely. You have every right to, and I'll support you.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome, Chris.
Any other questions for the Chief?
I see a couple of hands.
You do?
Was it Bill Hughes, I see? Oh, or maybe Claire? I I can't tell.
No, I don't see any hands up.
Mine wasn't really a a question. Suggestion or question also about, um,
Bill Hughes.
Okay.
Does Hudson Connect start at Second Street, not Third Street?
Why? I thought it was Second Street.
Second, yeah. All right. That's why I took my hand up. So I thought it was something that could go in with that planning, but.
I'm not seeing hands.
But I I
Hold on a second. Uh, sure. Sorry, Shaheem, could you make me co-host so that I can see the raised hands? For some reason, they're not appearing. But anyway, Mr. Hughes, Bill?
Yes, sir. I have another issue, but pretending this the woman that just spoke brought up a great issue. And I will point out, I think what her concern is, it's the same as that I have a lot of times when I'm approaching Warren Street. All the hanging lights where where you enter come into the intersections, all the hanging lights, when you're standing on the curb, depending on what angle you're standing at, it's difficult to tell if it's a red or green light. So as you're trying to cross the street, it becomes dangerous. But Fifth Street, where you have the the lights mounted on a lower trajectory, you could look at the light at eye level, you can tell. So maybe that's an alternative, but that that's the difference that I see with the with the lights on the streets.
Well, that's you're right, and that's been demonstrated by Peter Spear when he took video of people at that corner and their inability to see whether it was green or red. So we know it's definitely a a a spot that needs attention. Did the Chief leave? Yes, he did.
No, he's here.
I'm here, Tom.
Oh. So I guess it's really just, I mean, a question of being able to finance a different style of light. Wasn't there some issue about uh, because it's a state route, it can't have that other type of light? In other words, a street, a straight mounted on the street?
I'm sure there's regulations with DOT because of the truck route. I'm sure that they have a whole stock of regulations of as what kind, you know, they regulate everything, the the size of the sign, the color of the sign. I'm sure there's a whole chapter on devices and what device they can have there on their truck route. So it would take
Okay, thank you, Chief.
And Chief, just so you know, Kelly will be calling you tomorrow.
Okay, any other questions for Chief Moore? Okay. Thank you, Chief. And adding cleanup once again, Rob Perry. First, he's going to give us his general monthly report, but then he has a special report.
Dun dun dun.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah, that was brilliant. No, I mean, are we good to go?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, but thank you for your support.
Yes. Shaheem, you want to put up his pictures?
I I think I got it right here.
Okay, never mind.
I think I'm I'm technologically savvy maybe now. I don't know. Maybe not.
Okay.
Turn all these things off. Where are you? Waitboard. We have it here. Agenda. Let me try it again. Share screen. Bingo. Okay, good, good. And I can zippy do. Perfect. Septage for the month of August was fifty two thousand dollars. That's our third highest month. Turns out that the high, normally high revenue this summer is because there was a special contract with somebody, one of our haulers across the river for I don't know, some kind of a modification to a trailer park home or whatever. So it was short-lived, but it was, we were happy to take the revenue while we got it. We've seen obviously very, very heavy rainfalls throughout this whole summer. And so, you know, one of the consequences is heavy rainfalls is we get a lot of grit deposited in the tanks down in the down in the the digesters and the clarifiers. And this is because there's so much flow, so much volume. Most of the grit is literally coming from the area surrounding these old sewer mains. And it dissolves, puts it in suspension and carries it down to the plant where where it falls out of suspension. So we're looking at probably another ten thousand dollars in earth care to pull grit out of these tanks this month. Because once the grit gets too high, it covers the diffusers and then we're no longer able to apply air. And when you can't apply air, then our process is negatively impacted. So closeout documents to W for our WQIP, which was the home station project. We're, you know, we've still submitted them, but, you know, for whatever reason, DEC is waiting for something from EFC. Anyway, the reason I mentioned that is because we're still waiting for the reimbursement for the that project. The portion of project. Catch Basin, this was just an old stone style basin at the intersection of Fifth and Union here in picture one. And so as we excavated, it really wasn't in any condition to come to repair. National Grid comes in, this truck actually is holding the pole in place while we excavate around it. We had a new basin which was installed, knocked a little hole through it for the pipe. The pipe's not installed here, but this is what we have to encounter in most of our excavations. This is the sixteen inch, the old forest main from the eighteen hundreds that we now use as a storm line, but in the way, there's here, a water main here and a gas main in the middle. So you know, it's it's always tricky, you know, never know what you're going to get into, but the it was installed and it's operating. So that's good news. Less water going down Union Street for sure. The up at the water plant, you know, that plant's fifteen years old, so there's a lot of technological issues. The this is the old, actually that date is correct, three twelve nineteen twenty. So why is it old if it's a year old? Because it's been on a shelf and I think it was refurbished. The reality is that the the technology itself is just not able to keep up with the new processes and other improvements we've made to it. This product was purchased because the previous one actually failed and the plant went offline. And so this was kind of an emergency fix until we could upgrade this portion of the PLC. PLC is basically the one of the brains for the water plant. So that spent and saw that was in the twenty twenty one budget. So that's that's a good upgrade to have under our belt. The remember the saga of the the lost pig. The good news is we actually received delivery of the parts, the valve and the T and many of the other components necessary for the excavation. So we'll be revisiting that. You know, that project, if you will, to try and figure out you know, get that thing out of there. We are beginning hydrant flushing tonight. So this is a three day process. Day one, which is tonight, starts on the south side of the street. So, you know, what we do is we open this hydrant that's down here by Basilica, wide open. And then we start at the tippy top of the system up here on Worth Avenue. And we systematically open, close, open, close, open, close. And what happens is when the schmutz gets stirred up, the water is already racing down this way. And so all that schmutz gets blown out into the ground down here instead of, you know, going into people's tubs and ice cube makers and things of that that nature. And we also do it in the middle of the night because typically less things are going on in the middle of the night, so there's less chance of getting it in in your fixtures. If anybody does observe any discolored water over the next couple of days, just go to your tub. You need a fitting that doesn't have a screen or aerator on it and open it cold only. No hot water, because if you draw hot water, it might suck some of that stuff into your hot water tank or it will settle out and, you know, it's not the end of the world, but you prefer to just have it go down the drain. So just giving you the heads up, if people happen to see water running down the road, now that's what's going on. And that'll be for the next three nights. We use about a half a million gallons a day during this process. So it's actually, we we have to increase our production by almost fifty percent. So then we're on to DPW. This is down the salt shed where we store the salt, the road salt. This wall has a crack in it. That's just because of the weight of the salt against it, the machines pushing it. So we hammered out the wall, cleared everything up. And once it's cleaned up, they start forming for the for the concrete. This is the last wall. We we did the the wall in the back back in two thousand and eleven. We did the this is on the north side. We did the south wall in two thousand and fourteen. So just maintenance on the on the structure. The what we have here, you know, this is something that we did as an upgrade a couple of years ago, but we, you know, there's been some power outages of late. So when the light system goes out, you know, we have this jet, we had an electrician put a basically a transfer switch in here with a plug. We bring the generator, we plug it into. And so at least these lights will be on. The Third Street lights work during power outage. We don't have a similar thing for the rest of the lights, but this seems to be the one most prone to going out. The and this is just the guys helping DP or helping co enforcement move from their old digs down at four twenty nine up to seven forty five. Moving on to parks. Here's the water feature for the whale at the Promenade Hill. This was installed just so that we could install the the contractor, install the plumbing, how to do flow tests or pressure tests, make sure there weren't any leaks. As you can see, there's a number of jets that go through the hoop here. And there's this is going to be the spout, I guess, and it goes up pretty high in the air, which I remind everybody that's at the Hudson Water Department, we put the pressure in the pipe. And so plenty of pressure. We've then removed it, of course, because this big old truck here had loaded about twenty yards of concrete onto the pad. So this is, this little hose here is actually the concrete being pumped by that truck. Goes in, they're screeding it here, a little trial work here, some handwork. You know, this is a vibratory factor, gets some of the bubbles out, helps so we can get around the rebar. And at the end, you know, everything gets nice. And this is actually the end treatment, this brushing. And that's the it puts like a tactile service on it. So it's not super, super smart, smooth, because the final treatment will be like a skin that will be slip resistant and, you know, not as rough as raw concrete so that with a little bare feet don't get torn up and, you know, we don't have to worry about people sliding around. So that's going on with that. The the one of the issues we're having now is the the quarried stone for the steps. So now this is a sample of the stone. We actually went over to the quarry in Alco. And as you can see, it's, I mean, I'm not a stone aficionado, but it looks pretty nice. Apparently, though, these fissures are inside of the slabs and they don't they don't know that the fissures, the cracks are in there necessarily until after they're cut. So, you know, we've called for some pretty long steps so that they're, you know, they're continue, you know, just big pieces. And we're having trouble getting inventory that's that's long enough to meet those pieces. Just as a interesting thing, once all the pieces, these are for the pavers. So each one of these guys has a little Mylar template. It's hard to see because it's bent down, but there's actually these minute little angles. No, not one of these are square. That's that's what landscape architects like to do. And, you know, and the contractor and everybody else is you know, not happy with it, but it is what it is. So anyway, so we got this nice these templates have to go over top of every stone to be cut out for all the pavers. And and just to give you the size, this is a this is actually a cable that's running across here between these two wheels up over top. It's it's a diamond braid. And that slices the rock and they also have this massive saw here. And it's it was pretty, pretty impressive operation. I'm not gonna lie. So that's, you know, right now we're having trouble getting a timeframe for the stone because everybody else is kind of winding down, but we need the stone in place before we can obviously finish the project. So we're hoping sometime in October, the stone is available, or this is October, sometime later this month at least. But, you know, it's a day to day thing. Stone, Seventh Street Park, many where this is the excavator pulling out the used. And, you know, this is cutting up the fence, so that's all nice and that's going and out of there. One of the other issues is, you know, this, this is also in the Seventh Street Park, gives you an idea of, you know, what kind of crap there is for electrical infrastructure. But the handhold of the box that they set in was actually busted. So we did, you know, replace the the handhold, at least so that way the this mess of spaghetti, you know, is a is secure. Obviously, whatever the future plan for the park is or will be, the, you know, it's clear there's going to be a new electrical infrastructure. Down at the dog park, here's a similar handhold and that has a blow off in it so we can just blow the water out seasonally like we do at the cemetery. This is the water valve that turns on and off. And there's a there's also a pressure reducer inside of it. Otherwise, it would be a hundred and thirty PSI. We wouldn't want to, you know, start peeling the getting some of the hair off of the dogs. Anyway, it's installed and it is operational. So there's water down there for the doggy park. The good news with Ferry Street is we've received this letter, it's called No Exception. Basically, you know, none of these guys can speak English. It's essentially, you know, we've reviewed it, we've asked you questions, you responded to the questions. And we don't have any further questions for you at this time. So, you know, let's move on with this process. Obviously, the, you know, the final design plans, they're they're gonna they don't want to see, but this is, you know, this is this is good. We're still waiting for a similar letter from CSX and something similar from DOT. But, you know, I guess one out of three. So we're also progressing through the right of way process. So there's two easements that we need. One is on the north side of Front Street for the terrace and one is on the north side, on the west side of the tracks, which is a little park from Parks and Rec. And so we've, there's a process that evaluates what it is and what it isn't. And so you'll have two invoices before you this month. One for four hundred dollars, which is the easement for the terrace. And one for, I believe it was thirty five hundred dollars for the portion of property for Parks and Rec. These have already been agreed to by everybody involved. We just need the money to go with the the easements. And that's another step that we, you know, need to complete as we go through this process. One of the you know, the the hitches that we're having now, even though everything else seems to be moving forward, is relocation of the utilities. And the fact of the matter is this bridge can be significantly wider. So there are utility poles on the south side of the existing bridge that need to be moved further. Now, there's three of them that need to be moved on the west side, but that's no no big shtick because the city owns those properties. So, you know, for a pole to move five or 10 feet one way or the other, it's really, it doesn't make any difference. But one of the poles needs to be moved from the city right of way onto CSX property or Amtrak property. I'm not sure who owns it on the corner of Front and Ferry Street. And so we're obviously, we're, you know, encountering difficulties getting those that utility easement managed. So So the last thing that I have for the bridges. So there, you know, are a couple of, many of these things are of the design features with the bridge are basically mandated based on what elevations we need, the size of the site, the characteristics of the site, as well as, you know, the new ADA stuff, new this and new that. So there's a lot of things that, but we do have some kind of say on the fencing. What kind of stone face goes on the bridge? If, if you want to have it faced off or not. And, you know, some level of input on the lights. It's not a lot because DOT and the rail are very, very specific on signs and design features, but there are options. So what I've asked Clayton Manning to do is make up a couple of poster boards for each of the categories with different options. And you know, we'll find a public place to post them and give people a couple of weeks to kind of go around and take a look at it. And after that's happened, we'll, we'll schedule a public meeting. So that way people can have a discussion regarding what they think they like, what they don't. You know, I mean, you know, we do have some, some choices along the way. So might as well, you know, have people make a choice. You know, obviously I think everything has to go through, set up through historic preservation as well. So they can, they can call through it. But, oh, that's it. So that'll be the next phase. I was looking for the word charrette to quote my, my friend, William Chatham, because I know much he loves that word, but there's no, I don't know how much leeway we're going to have with, with these features. So that said, that's the end of the DPW portion of this program.
Thank you, Rob. And his name is Walter and it's a charrette.
What is it?
His name is Walter Chatham.
What did I say?
William.
Oh.
It's all right.
I'm looking at Bill Hughes. I can't help it. Got William on the brain.
Okay. So questions about this report first, and then we'll go on with Rob's other report. You want to take your screen down, Rob, so I can see hands, please? Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council for Rob?
Yeah, Rob.
Oh, sorry.
No, this Malachi, how you doing, Rob? Just a quick question. Yeah. How you doing, Rob? Yeah, just wanted to know if there's any, you know, there any progress on the Mill Street project with leveling of the ground? Have you heard anything?
I don't have anything to do with it. I'm not doing anything with that. You guys are handling that. It was when I spoke to, I can't remember her name. Maya.
Yeah. Okay. All right. But I'll talk to you later about it, but I know, I know that there was a, you know, certain people that we were gonna, you were gonna get some numbers back from, but.
No, she already got the quotes.
Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
I'm actually still waiting on them. I haven't been able to get Rick to get them to me. So we're, I'm still working on that. Just to give you an update. Okay.
Thank you, Maya.
Thank you.
Jane Trombley, how's your hand up?
Hi, Rob. Thanks, Tom. Rob, I have a question on the status of the Union Street, three hundred block of Union Street neighbors that coalesced around the request for speed humps, not.
That's the next presentation.
I don't mean to cut you off, James.
Next presentation.
A special presentation is about, it's coming up.
Oh, oh, I thought, oh, sorry. Okay. Well, I don't want to. Okay, okay. I wait with anticipation. Thanks.
Any questions from council members? Any questions from the public or comments? Okay. Can we now have your special presentation, Rob? And before you start, can I ask, no, no questions or interruptions during this presentation, but they'll, so save your questions, write them down, and Rob will be happy to answer them afterwards.
Sure. Thank you. It's gonna be, it's, it's pretty brief.
Okay. Take it away.
So, you know, part of, we're in the world of streets and regulations and layers of regulations. You know, the best part to do is kind of start with what's, what a street looks like and what its classification is. So DOT publishes, it's the local roads inventory, and they do this for every municipality in the state. And it gives the, you know, identification for the road, each which section. So the section we're talking about is between Front and West Court. It's basically half and well. So one of the inputs is number of three lanes, which anybody who's ever tried to drive down that block knows it's three lanes because if there's two cars on either side, you've got to pull over to yield. The type of pavement type, which is this category right here is O. O, you know, is a overlay, which means it's a concrete subbase with an asphalt top as opposed to a purely asphalt road. And this zero here is shoulder width, which of course is no shoulder. And there's a functional class, which is a nineteen. So, you know, nineteen, these comprise all facilities not on any of the higher systems. They serve primarily to provide direct access to abutting land and access to the higher order systems. It offers the lowest level of mobility. Basically, they're your smallest streets. So that's what DOT has Road Classified ads. So then, as you move through the Highway Design Manual, which is chapter twenty-five, you know, there's a section called Traffic Calming. And this goes on, you know, anybody can just Google this. It goes on for several pages. So one of the lines here is speed humps, not bumps. And it says suitable at up to fifty kilometers per hour, which is thirty-one miles an hour, not recommended for anything over fifty. There's no speed limit in the City of Hudson over there anyway. So, so the speed, you know, this is the category two, which is the, you know, from the functional class. So that gets us, you know, that gives us some information. There's also, you know, a section in, you know, in the next kind of pages of traffic calm. And it's, you know, there's dozens of traffic calming options. I just happen to put that one page because I don't need to reproduce a two hundred page document. Anybody else can Google it. So, you know, it starts with community involvement, the most important successful part of traffic calming, helps community understand the impacts, you know, recognizing, identifying, completing. So the process here, you know, residents, owners and store operators on the street, you know, the following list of potential parties, not limited, but is necessarily appropriate for all parties. Basically, you guys already have that. The residents have already kind of come together. They've, they've already put their petitions together. So, you know, you're, you're number one on the process is okay. Local populace on the streets with traffic may be diverted. Basically, Allen Street, Warren Street, you know, what do they think about it? That's, you know, that's part of the engagement process that, that should take place. Obviously, emergency services, police, fire, ambulance. You know, that's, I mean, Clemmy kind of does have a traffic safety board. But, you know, those are the types of people that you need to have input from because they're the ones that are going to come to the assistance of everybody in the city. So other things, transit authority, you know, some, this is kind of a cookie cutter. You know, some of these are larger metropolitan areas, which, you know, have a municipal planning organization, which the MPO is in larger markets. We don't necessarily have one here. So, you know, this is kind of the, the shtick that DOT says, you know, there's a process involved. And then, you know, so I did reach out to a, a, a traffic engineer, this guy's John Surth, he's retired from DOT and he's a guy who gets called in for expert testimony when municipalities get sued. You know, so, you know, the first thing he says is to evaluate, you know, what the problem, if you have an actual problem, but basically what's the problem? In a, come up with the evaluation. You know, he obviously in his years of experience is well aware that, you know, Hudson is not unique. There's lots of municipalities that want lower speed limits than, you know, fifty miles, which is why speed limits are set by the state and, you know, traffic lights intersections. There's MUTCD, which is Municipal Uniform Traffic Code Device. So there's lots of acronyms in DOT. So, you know, there's, you know, it's not like we're inventing the wheel here. There are systems and there are, you know, review protocol and there's, there's things in place. And, and this guy, I got John Surth to say that so that way it's not Rob Perry saying it. It's, you know, this guy from DOT saying it. You know, so collecting information, it's, it's actually pretty easy. This is a one sample page from the of the traffic study for the truck route. And this one was actually put up in front of my house on Prospect Avenue. I did pick a Sunday, which is, you could see here because the, it was close to the crosswalk for the hospital. And anybody who's going on Prospect Avenue during the week knows that there's hundreds of vendors and employees walking back and forth, might skew the number, Sunday, not so much. So, you know, we come up with a number and they had twenty-four hundred and seventy-two cars came over in a twenty-four hour period. And that's all these are. These are hours. These are fifteen minute intervals. And it's pretty detailed stuff. It, it, the first, you know, ten or fifteen columns are classes, which basically bars, trucks, trucks with dual axles, you know, tractor trailers, box trucks, you know, there's, each one of these has a definition, as does everything in DOT. The second half of it is speed limit. There are speed. So it's not only measuring the class of the vehicle, but how fast they're going. And so when you run the numbers that on Prospect Avenue on this day, sixty-two and a half percent, so basically two thirds, were driving thirty miles an hour or, or less. Between thirty and thirty-five, almost another third, really, thirty percent were going between thirty and thirty-five miles an hour. Another six and a half percent were going thirty-five to forty miles an hour. Now, anybody that's looked at Prospect Avenue, been up, you'd swear to God, people are driving sixty, seventy miles an hour. But the data, you know, shows that, you know, people are actually driving basically, you know, for the most part at or below the speed limit. So the actual number that was forty miles an hour or more is eighteen with, you know, one being at forty to five to fifty and one being a fifty to fifty-five. Obviously, this is a central route for emergency vehicles. Sheriff's departments, Greenport Fire, State Police, they come rip roaring through here when they need to, when they need to. So but, you know, this was, this, this is one of those boxes you see along the side of the road with two hoses. And it's got some algorithm. And it's pretty easy to, you know, to get raw empirical data that's, you know, it is what it is. So that was kind of interesting. Now, you know, publication, this is obviously an older thing from two thousand and three, but this is an opinion from the Attorney General's Office. And it was a local municipality asking about, you know, speed bumps, if you will. And, you know, of course they make multiple references, you know, this is written by an attorney. You know, intended to reduce speed bumps themselves are five to 10 miles, where speed humps, you know, can handle a little bit faster. Not a whole lot more. You know, there's, there's analysis of local governments, what they have to say, you know, form traffic code. I don't need to read this, you know, you can Google this. Or you can, you know, this will be up on the city's webpage at the communication anyway. But you can see through that, you know, they conceivably could be considered non-conforming traffic control devices. So there's, you know, there's all sorts of references to, you know, Florida and other states. And, you know, speed bumps considered a highway design feature, subject to the laws and procedures generally govern highway maintenance. And, you know, there's a commission of transportation. You know, speed bumps generally are not recommended for installation on public roadways because they may cause vehicles to jolt when crossed at the lawful speed limit, you know, shouldn't ever. So obviously, you know, people draw, try and say that speed humps are different. Are, I guess they are, you know, somewhat different. But the reality is a lot of the concerns, you know, based on the professionals that I speak with, really come back to a liability. And, you know, what happens if somebody is traveling the legal speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour or thirty miles an hour or whatever the legal speed limit is and they, they hit these, these things, then, you know, this, because the city put them there, the city is liable for any damages or injuries that come from that. No different than if I put a two inch pothole across the road, you know, we would be equally responsible. So, and the other part that, you know, I want the, the council to kind of keep, you know, keep forefront is that this is not the first request that the city has had for these. This is probably the tenth since I've been here. Some have also come with petitions and requests and most have made similar discussions. So I, it's important that you understand that if this is the, you want to go through the public comment process, which should, you know, and there should be input from the emergency management and other professionals. Just don't look at it as one or two, look at it as probably twelve or fifteen or twenty. Because those other neighborhoods are going to say, you know, we asked for this, you know, a year ago or two years ago or 10 years ago. So just, you know, want everybody to be aware that, you know, the discussion is not a new discussion. All I wanted to do was take a brief opportunity to kind of put some of the technical stuff out there. So that way people aren't saying, well, Rob Perry said, you know, Rob Perry didn't say anything. All Rob Perry did was read what other people wrote. So that's what I've got.
Well, thank you, Rob. Take your screen. Oh, thanks. So I guess questions from the council members first. Rebecca.
So a couple of things. One, can you tell us what are some of the other neighborhoods or streets that have requested speed bumps?
Every street on the Boulevard. The alleys, some people on alleys. Prison Alley behind the Maker. I think Boulevards at one point, or I'm sorry, somewhere around Harry Howard at one point. So.
And why, and so why did they not receive speed bumps or humps rather?
Because they're not good for our equipment and there's the issue of liability because if you legally drive at the speed, they're good for twenty miles an hour, fifteen miles an hour, but the legal speed limit's fifteen miles an hour faster. So the city would be responsible for any damages to the vehicle or injury in, in to them or whatever, if they go out of control. So also they're not recommended for bicycles or motorcycles are considered highly dangerous.
So wait, I wasn't totally done. But I'm just curious, like what, so why? Well, it, it seems following from what you're saying, given that so many neighborhoods have requested speed calming. And there hasn't been any speed calming apparently. That maybe we have to consider lowering the speed limit to what is actually suitable with speed humps or, you know, citywide.
If you want to supersede state law, go right ahead.
Well, is there, is it possible to supersede state law?
I'm not an attorney.
Jeff?
Well, we are, we are actually still.
The short answer is no, you can't. And what you're doing is you have the ability, that's why we have the speed limit law to lower it to twenty-five along certain stretches. And you can apply it to more of them, but you can do it. But I have to go back and look. I don't remember. But I think twenty-five is the lowest we can go.
Okay. So just so I understand, Rob, the document that you just showed us, is it stating that if your speed limit is above twenty-one miles per hour, you cannot have speed humps? State law wise, or is it just saying it's not?
Like not recommended.
It's, and and can you just, again, clarify where are these recommendations issuing from?
The United States and New York State Department of Transportation.
But so like, and that's up to date. That's like up to date, like it's not recommended.
Based on what I found, yes.
Okay. So if we look, we'll find what you've found.
Okay. Is that it, Rebecca?
That's it for now. Thanks.
Okay. Dominic was up next.
Thank you. Rob, thank you for your information. It's, it's a lot of what I found out initially on through traffic calming that in theory, you know, speed, speed humps, you know, sound, you know, like an answer, but there's a long road and a lot of complications to that. That being said, Rebecca, an answer to your question, you know, I've been extensively down the road of changing speed limits citywide. And it's a terrible, terrible uphill battle. It comes with the state, you know, a governor, the governor signing off on that. You know, I had many state people involved. It wasn't a, a practical solution. You know, I had many state people involved. It wasn't a practical solution. That's why we went back to the drawing board and starting these templates of these two streets. Slowing the speed limit to see how this works. And then additionally, utilizing traffic calming to speed radar science, the solar power speed radar science. There are two different types. And and that being said, I'm in conversations with a company coming in to demonstrate both types. One's a very portable one that collects data and also gives information. And the other one's like the one on Harry Howard Avenue. So I think those situations will be very valuable in using those initially to see how it works. It has been working on Harry Howard Avenue. You know, those traffic radars. And I think, starting off now with these two streets, I think this is going to send a template. I think that's the direction, you know, we should, we should go. And then as it gets easier, we get more educated on how to make this happen. I think this is, you know, something that we're on the road to. And I will be inviting everyone once these demonstrations come into play to see how this these actually work. So, but I I do thank you, Rob. I think that was very informational and I appreciate it.
And to let people know who weren't at previous meetings, Union Street has been added to the proposed speed limit law. In case you don't know that. Any more questions for Rob? Council members, public? Tamara Adler, you're muted. I'm not anymore.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much, Rob. Thank you for talking about this. And thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Boujanow and council members for accepting our petition. I live on Union Street. And I'm really grateful that the the journey from starting to petition you guys for this to talking about it publicly has been so short. That's really encouraging. I did take notes from what you said, Rob, because it was a really, there was a lot, a lot in there. And I just want to say, I very much know that there are other neighborhoods that have requested this and I'm so excited to be joining them in trying to prioritize pedestrian safety. In no way are we trying to prioritize Union Street. It's just that we're, it's that's where we live with our little kid. And I noticed on John Sirt's email to you, Rob, that you posted that he said he was so happy to be getting an email that wasn't about somebody having been hit. He was really happy to be trying to prevent it. And that was a nice thing to see because I think that's what we're trying to to do. And so I, it was, it was encouraging that he, as the person that you look to as such an expert, said that it was great to be getting ahead of it, not reacting to it. I also noticed that you wrote that that one of the, I think it was your first sign. Or no, I guess it was your second one, that noted that speed humps on a functional nineteen road were suitable at fifty miles per hour. And the last one that you posted, which was from Florida, was about speed bumps, which are much higher. So I just wanted to say that that was also really encouraging. That, you know, we're looking at a twenty five mile an hour place.
It was fifty kilometers per hour.
No, sorry. If you go back to the first one, fifty kilometers per hour was the speed bumps, which was the the slightly later, or sorry, slightly earlier. It was later in your presentation, but you said from, it was an outdated one. That was for speed bumps. But the very first one that you posted from the DOT, which was so helpful, but where you highlighted it in yellow, said that speed humps were suitable on a functional nineteen road to up to fifty miles an hour, which we hope we don't have to deal with here. And so that was really great to see. You can put it back up if you want to, but I was just excited by it.
Okay.
But just one, one more question. So if, I mean, because that wasn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see any questions. So I also noticed that you, that the you, that process that you, yeah, that one. Suitable at up to, oh, fifteen, fifty kilometers an hour. So that's suitable at up to twenty miles an hour.
That's fifty is thirty.
So great.
Thirty one.
Oh, thirty one. Okay, amazing. So then that still puts us in the realm of what's what's good for here since we're at twenty five. You wrote thirty one. Sorry. Thank you. But then the the the, my my question was that you, the process that you put up there, it said it wasn't, it under what you would underlined, it said it wasn't limiting or required. When you talked about, you know, so we started the process by getting the petitions from our street. And then there were sort of, there was step two and step three. Were you saying, were you saying that you that you felt like there was another step we had to go through according to the DOT? Or did you feel like I was just reading that, what was on your screen and it said it wasn't, that was just an idea for how we would move forward. But what would your idea be for how we could move forward now?
You're muted, Rob, if you're saying something.
Am I here? My back?
There you are.
Okay, so yeah, so these were just, they're just guidelines because that, you know, no two municipalities is the same. Obviously, New York City has very little in common with Calaverick, you know, from a traffic standpoint. So, you know, what I was saying is that, you know, obviously you guys have done step one here is number one as an option is definitely clearly done. But there are other ones that, you know, definitely should be considered. I don't know if, you know, five, six, seven and eight or but definitely, you know, the if you know that if these are on Union Street, the people are going to take Allen Street. I mean, that's, that's a no brainer. To get her to bypass them. So, you know, you probably should be some kind of discussion with Allen Street. As to whether or not they want them to or, or, you know, what their, what their impact is. But the third one, I I don't, I I see that as a must have. I mean, I don't know how you can consider anything in the road permanently that's going to that absolutely is going to impact response times or equipment that's responsible to keep human beings alive. So I I would, I can't strongly recommend enough that there should be some input from our public safety people. Other than that, you know, like I said, a lot of these things are just bigger municipalities.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Tomar. Bill Hughes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Rob, for this presentation. Actually, it's serendipity because I I wasn't coming here necessarily for this discussion. I was coming here for traffic safety. But now that we're on traffic safety and talking about humps and and speed limits, really, and I think this is the 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 prominent discussion that we should be having is I I don't know if many know, but I'm now living on the the two hundred block of Columbia Street. And as I'm here, I, this area is the most densely populated in the city of Hudson, so also has the lowest median income. But yet, you have a a a litany, a ton of trucks that are coming here from from the hall roll that is traveling this path, you know, at least twice a week. And it is a large amount of trucks. And this is not the truck route. The truck route starts from Third Street North. And and it seems to be that when the conversation stopped about the truck route and stopped about the causeway, that people had just turned, uh, turned their heads to the truck traffic that is coming through here. And I'm telling you, if we're going to talk about safety, forget about traveling thirty or thirty five miles an hour down a a one way street. You have the most densely populated with seniors on one side, youth and and low income families on the other side. And you have trucks barreling up here at one every five minutes. That should be the 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 top conversation that we're having here on the council. And if people were to ask me, and I know this would lead to a lawsuit, I put a permanent moratorium on that until we were able to address that situation.
Bill, thank you. And I I know that John Rosenthal not only has his hand up, but has has been talking about this for quite some time. John?
Yeah, thanks for that comment, Bill. I agree one hundred percent that that concession the city makes west of Third Street to the company to handle their overburden of trucks that they've decided can't use their private road in two directions. This is something the city's tolerated for a long time and I do think it is a it should be a priority of the council and the city government to help that that situation by imposing a weight limit on all city streets that aren't the state truck route. It would be very hard for that, for the private company to argue that harm here. But of course, you know, we'd have to investigate that. But I do think, you know, we've tolerated a long time and it's something that we can do, which is the local law regulating truck weight limits. I haven't had, I've been persuaded by any arguments from our council about why we can't do it because it wouldn't constitute some sort of taking, but get, given that we're in a review right now, certainly there's reason to be somewhat cautious. But I do think, given the fact that, just as you said, Bill, it's one of the poorer parts of the city. We have elderly residents there. Just, we've been more than fair in allowing this empty truck traffic from the company to continue back to the state truck route when they have it within their means and under our law right now to use another method to get out, which is their their private road. So I think we should definitely move forward and investigate this and 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 try to do something about it sooner rather than later.
Thank you, John. Rebecca?
I'm just seconding that and calling for, I guess, you know, swift action really because I remember this is something, I mean, we brought this up at the beginning of this term, I believe, and it, you know, didn't proceed, but it it really is something that there's really, you know, it's pretty pressing. So whatever the next step that needs to be taken to actually bring it into some kind of legal committee meeting, I would like to make a motion that we bring it to legal committee.
We can pursue this in legal in in the near.
I would second that.
Awesome.
Okay, getting back to Rob's report, is there anybody else who has a question or a comment for Rob? Okay, let's get to I'm sorry, Tamara, did you want to say one more thing? You're muted.
All right, I have one more question, which is just should, is it worth, so so my, my, my to do is to to talk to, which is a great idea, thank you, to go talk to the emergency vehicles. Obviously, I'll go and talk to Chief Moore because they're, you know, our neighbor up the block. And is it, should I talk to neighboring municipalities that have put in speed humps? I've started to do that. And I know they exist, but I don't know whether that's useful. I guess like what, like what should I, what should I do to help? And I've called Dominic back. I think we're playing phone tag. Obviously, we love, you know, I I've any kind of like the the solar traffic speed things. But what 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 do you recommend that I, that that we on Union Street do other than talking to our emergency vehicles?
Rob has seemed to have left the room. But I think it was clear on his, you know, emergency vehicles, streets, other streets in the neighborhood, you know, in the near vicinity, there was basically, he was saying one, two, three and four were the important ones in terms of what you should do.
And then, and then is the idea that other, our other streets can can pursue this similarly and hopefully we can.
I would think so.
Okay.
Okay, moving along, we now have a lot of resolutions tonight and we could do these pretty quickly, I hope. Shaheen, can you post the first, excuse me, first resolution? If you're still with us. There we go. Okay, this is Commissioner Beads. I need an introduction, please. Shersha, thank you, sir. And a second. Anyone?
Doon.
Doon, thank you, sir. The next resolution, please, Shaheen. Let's see. This is the Steve Hudson Fire Department receiving a check from County of Columbia for four hundred dollars. Can I have an introduction, please?
Yes.
Ryan and Abdu, I mean,
Shersha.
Shersha? Next resolution, please. This is accepting donations to the Senior Center. Let's see where they're from. It does not. Oh. It's attached on the second page. Could you, could you just post the second page, please, Shaheen, so we can see who these generous people are? Okay, and it includes our our own Ryan Wallace. John Donaschek. Oh, were these in honor of Gina Moore? Or no, this was something different?
No, because they're participants in some of the programs who
Oh, okay.
Support Senior Center.
Got it. Okay, can I have an introduction? I heard two people, so I'll say Shersha. Who else?
Malaka.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next resolution, please. Okay, this resolution is a long time coming. This is the resolution to, which is also going to be followed up by a law to amend the zoning code to allow certain commercial uses in buildings containing non-conforming uses in the R four district. So this will allow for eating and drinking establishments that have a certain history involved with the building. We don't need to go into all the details right now. Can I have an introduction? Someone?
Yeah.
That's Malachi? And a second, please.
Eileen, I'll, I'll second.
Oh, thank you, Eileen. Okay. Now, next is the law, oh, on your desk still is the law establishing the twenty five mile speed limit. I believe we will be able to vote on that next week.
Yeah.
And the next law is the proposed law, which is the law allowing certain uses in the R four district, which we'll all have time to read between now and when we, when we devote, when we vote on it. So can I have an introduction for this? Someone?
Shersha.
Shersha, and who was the other second person?
Rebecca.
Rebecca, okay. Well, that completes all our official business. So if anybody, hold on. Hold on a second. If anybody from the council would like to speak first. Okay, Rebecca. You're muted.
Yep. So there were a couple of resolutions at legal committee that I wonder why are not coming forward.
Because they are staying in the legal committee for now.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, next is Dominic. Dominic, you're muted.
Thank you. I just want to, for new business, is apparently, from my understanding, and Rebecca, you can help me out, that we have a fair housing officer now in the city. I had somebody contact me for that information and there's no information that I could find or she could find. And when I contacted City Hall, I was told to use the email for her, the Fair Housing Officer for the Planning Board. Is there any way I think we need to separate and make it, you know, knowledgeable that we have a fair housing officer, the contact number, the email address, everything, so we can utilize this? I mean, it's been, what, four months now? And I don't think it's serving it.
Oops.
Oh.
In contact, what we
So Rebecca, do you want to?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna just respond to that. Yeah, I think it is something that the city, the mayor's office needs to prioritize. There, it's been a little difficult to find an appropriate office space for her, but that has now been taken care of. And I think there's just been a lot, you know, a lot of administrative work to just get her a web, web, you know, get her web presence established basically on the city website. But I I totally agree that it needs to be prioritized. And she needs to be visible or not. and she needs to be visible, or not just she, but the role of the fair housing officer needs to be visible on the city website and accessible, uh, in all the ways. So, um.
Do you have a plan for where you're going to put, put it on the website? Where you'd like to see it on the website?
Well, honestly, I was hoping that was something that, um, that the mayor's office would. You know, I think that, um, the city website in general is kind of handled in the mayor's office and like where things are posted and such, but I mean, I can try to figure that out, too.
Okay.
I think maybe there should be, I don't know if there was, maybe I missed it, but maybe there should be some kind of, you know, news notification or press notification that there's, you know, uh, so it can get out there, um, you know, to the people that we do have this fair housing, especially now when things are going to be turning around pretty quick in January, February, uh, for some, you know, some need.
Yep, I agree. Thanks for bringing that up, Dominic.
Thank you, Dominic. Anybody else from the council like to speak? I don't see any hands up. Anybody from the community? Ron Kopniky, you're muted. Ron, you're still muted.
Come again? How am I, how am I doing now? Am I coming through?
Now you are coming through.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I just have a question, a couple of questions about the zoning, uh, legislation. When this came up before, there was discussion of how a change to R4 would affect other, uh, zoning districts. Uh, could this be clarified? I think Mr. Wallace said in, in the meeting, according to the minutes on August 17th, quoting from the minutes, "It's almost like a waterfall catalyst when you start changing building laws in the Rs." This wouldn't just be for R4, it's 5, 6, 7, 8, and so on. Is this, is this?
Jeff, do you want to take it? Because I know you clarified.
No, it was, it was a legitimate question that Ryan had about it, the way the code was written. But, um, with the R4, the R4, by changing it here, does not change any of the other districts.
Okay.
This is the only district that'll be affected.
And, and Mr. Kopniky, that was discussed in the following meeting from that, too, I believe it is, on record of the minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I may have missed that.
That's okay.
Uh, then my further question is, the wording of the proposed legislation says, "The prohibition, the existing prohibition on certain businesses is too broad because it effectively limits commercial uses to the Warren Street Commercial Center and prohibits such establishments, the R4, which could provide other business opportunities and eating and drinking choices in the R4, which encompasses a large area of the city south of Third Street." Why in particular is the R4 district south being singled out here as opposed to, because there's an R4 to the north of Warren Street, is there not?
Yeah.
So how come in this wording, this, the area south of Third is being singled out?
Wait. It is? Uh, let's see.
It says, "Eating and drinking choices in the R4, which encompasses a large area of the city south of Third Street."
I think that was supposed to, was that supposed to be west of Third Street, Jeff?
It can't be south of.
Not on my luck, probably.
I think it was just, I think it's an error.
I think it's an error. There's no such thing as south of.
Yeah, south.
Okay, well, that, I was.
It should be west.
Okay, I was curious about that.
And, and what it was, I said that because that is the majority of the area. It's not the whole area, but, yeah.
Okay.
It's just, I will say that.
Okay, thanks.
Good catch, Ron.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, where's Tiffany? Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, Eileen, Eileen, I mean.
Motion to adjourn, yes.
I second.
Was that Dominic?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I thank you all. And good night.
Good night.